Good afternoon. It is four o'clock on Monday, Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, December 3rd. We are going to be starting our board meeting, which we will have a break in between and then come back for our Tooth and Taxation, our Truth and Budgeting meeting. Please let the record reflect that four of us, including Commissioner Lenzmeyer, are here in person and Commissioner Persky was unable to be here today. For those of you who are able, please join us in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. So, before we move to approving the agenda, there's a couple of, I guess, just kind of modifications. Dr. Williams, do you want me to say it, or you want me to? I know you're trying to get set.
No, I sure can. What we thought we would do is take the item that is the ARP closeout item, which is under administration after the break and before the Truth and Budgeting, and move that up before the closed session, so it would be after Environmental Services. And then we'll take a break before the TNT.
So with that, I believe there's no other proposed changes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, it's approved. Consent agenda, members, did you have anything you wish to pull to discuss? And if not, looking for a motion to approve items E. 1, 2, 9 on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, we have that approved. Human Service Board, so we are recessing to convene the Human Services Board. Ms. Huberty.
Good afternoon, and Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Adjourned straighter. There are five items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today. The first is item F. 1, and it's the contract with Avivo, and it's on page 102. Avivo provides support for employment, job coach, job training, coaching assistance with resumes for our Minnesota Family Investment Program recipients to become self-sufficient, and this is our last contract before we do an RFP. The second item is item F. 2, and it's the Child and Teen Checkup Grant on page 103, and this is a mandated service that is one of our foundational public health responsibilities to help connect people to primary care providers, so families.
It's very touching today, Janet.
Receive their health checks and their, do their baby checks with families, and that's a mandated service. The third item is F. 3, and it's our local public health grant on page 106. This is our normal allocation that supports our mandate to protect communities from disease outbreaks through our vaccination clinics, prevention, and education. Item 4 is our Community Support Program Grant on page 109, and this is a biannual contract to support people with serious and persistent mental illness. And at this point, we are using this largely to support our social worker in the jail program so that we provide resources and care so that upon release, people are successfully reintegrating into the community. And finally, item 5, the fifth item is F. 5, and it's Claims Paid on Behalf of Human Services on page 111, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, pretty straightforward. Do you have a question, Commissioner Nott? Sarah Cumming?
Just a question, Madam Chair. So Melissa, like, on a lot of these grants, do, and I know, like, sitting on the tricap, they'll do a summation of, like, if it's 851,000, how much goes for supplies, how much goes for, do you guys have to fill something like that out, too?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Nott, there is a lot of oversight on all of our grants and a lot of administrative burden, frankly, so yes, there's a lot of, our Finance and Technology Division completely manages these grants in terms of the finances behind it, and we have to have things in certain categories. You can only spend it on certain things within a certain timeframe, and we monitor that and also get audited on these things.
Yeah, thanks.
That's always a good question, and a couple of the ones that are on here this time at least are a bit more flexible for local needs than some of the ones that we receive.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Bertram.
I asked a number of questions of Melissa earlier, and she's responded. I haven't had a chance to follow through on that, but, of course, the challenge always is, we get all these grants, and not just in Human Services, but sheriffs, all the departments, and, you know, money trickles up, money trickles down, bunch of strings attached, and, you know, it's kind of a vicious cycle, and yet, right now, that's the cycle, and I guess we got to play within that, but I asked some questions, and I'll review that information, and obviously, we need to do what we're doing right now. Any changes to this isn't going to come from the county alone, it'll have to come from the state and potentially sometimes the federal if we're going to change something, but it gets extremely bureaucratic, and then the auditing, that takes staff time, that takes your people away from other things that we could be doing, and so that's, it's a challenge, but it is what it is for now.
Well, and Commissioner Bertram, very much agree, and one of the things that's interesting, I'm going to use Commissioner Marsha Ward from Winona County for a second. She basically said to the Department of Health, can't you just give us one check? Because these don't go to anybody else, they come to us. These are one, things that we're required to do, and they're absolutely, somebody's got to have some oversight, I get that, but it is, there's lots of things that are very bureaucratic in all parts of this funding, so. The one thing to note is the foundational public health responsibilities grant, that's a newer one. Again, I wish they called it something besides grant, because it's not really, it's not like a grant, like we're applying to get more squad cars or something, this is how we get funded to do the mandates.
And Madam Chair, Commissioners, you're correct. Actually, the item F. 4, the Community Support Program Grant, this may be the last time you see it as a grant, it's, the Department of Human Services is actually trying to do what you just suggested and make it an allocation, so we don't have to spend so much administrative burden on something that comes in as an allocation biannually anyway.
That's great, that's really good. Yeah, it gets confusing, because otherwise, we might think that this is money, this one time money, where it's not.
Correct.
It's ongoing money, it's just we have to go through it. Okay, well, thank you, members. Looking for a motion to approve the Human Services Consent Items?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you want a second?
I can second.
All right.
This is going.
Great.
I made the observation that what's equal and what's fair are really two different definitions, so you'll always have that push back and forth between those two perspectives. Wait until my voice gets better to want more detail.
That's a very, very important and good observation, thank you for that. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all in favor of approving the Human Services Board Consent Agenda Items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. All right.
All right, thank you.
It's approved, thank you. Okay, we now have the continuation of our public hearings. What we're going to do is go ahead and come back for the first one, members, I hope this is okay, and then we will close it after, after we find out if there's the information that we get, and if there's anybody, if there's any other information or public comment to receive, and then we will do the same for the second one, and then we can go through both of these items and make the decisions. So yeah, come on up, please. So right now, we've got the continuation of the public hearing for the cannabis events, retail business registration and compliance ordinance number 679. Thank you both for being here.
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioners.
I'm wearing purple.
I guess we're in court.
We're, Brenda Tice and Chad May from the Stearns County Attorney's Office, we are here on that Continued Public Hearing for the Cannabis Events Retail Business Registration and Compliance Ordinance 679, and we are asking that, or, I'm just going to go through previous submissions of this, this item has been before the board on October 1st, October 15th, November 5th, and November 19th was the start of the public hearing in this matter. We're asking the board to complete the public hearing and close it and move forward with a decision on the proposed ordinance.
Do we have anybody who submitted additional comments?
We have not received any written comments on the ordinance. We've had some questions regarding how to obtain information on the ordinance that the Office of Cannabis Management has offered as a model, some questions about which cities would be covered, or it might be covered, under our proposal. Other than that, we have not received any comments on the ordinance itself.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is call to see if there's anybody here today that wants to offer additional comments. I'll ask for that for three times, if there's somebody, we'll close it, and then we'll go ahead and move to doing the same with the other one, and then we'll come back and go through these, if that's okay with both of you. Okay, all right, is there anyone here wishing to offer further comment regarding the proposed ordinance 679? Is there anyone here today that would like to offer a comment on the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone here today who'd like to offer comments on proposed ordinance number 679? Seeing none, and not seeing any kind of signs, I'm going to go ahead and close this one. Whoa, and then, is it Angie and Shelley, are you going to go through just the beginning part of the next one, you'll tell us whether, and they'll come right back up, we're just going to do this other piece, so that we can go through them, so that we will have closed them both, we will have gotten the comment periods done, and then we'll go through them.
I never saw somebody, Madam Chair, look that afraid of Chad leaving the podium and Brenda. Angie had that look, like, don't leave me alone.
I thought you adopted the ordinance without talking about it, so we're good.
We did it by ESP, it was, we're not really quite there yet, we're getting close. Okay, now, from a, I don't know if you have any additional presentation, but we're now moving to completing the public hearing to enact an ordinance number 680, Cannabis Amendments to Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439. So, any comments you want to give us, but then please let us know if anybody has submitted any further comments that we should be considering.
Yes, Madam Chair, Angie Barg, Environmental Services, and no additional information other than, well, actually, I do, I do have a couple of things. One would be, I did poll Benton County, Sherburne County, Morrison County, they've, Sherburne adopted, I think, last week or the week before, and, and the others are also looking to adopt, and they are going the interim use permit route for most of their cannabis, so I thought that would be of interest to you. And once we get to more discussion, I'll have, I have a slight change to one of the sections due to a meeting I had yesterday with a potential applicant, and so that was very helpful.
Okay.
And I received nothing in writing for testimony.
So what we're going to do is I will go ahead and call to see if there's anyone that's present here who would like to, and then we'll close that hearing, and then we can go through, through the steps one by one, and you'll just let us know what are the pieces that we need to be making decision points on. All right, so is there anyone present who would like to make comment or further comment to the proposed amendments to the land use and zoning ordinance number 439? Anyone wishing to make comment under the proposed ordinance number 439? Anyone here wanting to make comments? Seeing none, we'll close this part of that public hearing. Okay, both of our public hearings are closed, and so, should we still take it in the order that you originally had it, should we have Ms. Tice and Mr. Mayor, do you want to go first? All right, since they're on here.
She's plugged in.
Because she looked so concerned, we'll let you go ahead, let's go, you didn't really.
We're ready to go.
We're just having.
I would like, would you like to pick any?
Yeah, just 'cause. All right, let's go ahead and go through these ones. So at the end of this, we will be adopting, but we, I know we've got a few items, including interim versus conditional, so please help us go through this and.
Yes, Madam Chair, so on packet page H. 1 is where you'll see what you typically see for track changes, versions red would be new, and then I'm going to jump to the slides that we've been looking at the last couple of meetings. Again, we're here for, as Ms. Tice stated, for the second public hearing, and last time we were here, we talked, we talked about the different permit types, the conditional use, interim use, and I gave you a brief explanation of what some local counties are doing with respect to that. The decision points for the zoning ordinance remain the same. It's going to be to determine what permit type you want for the different, for the different businesses, setbacks, and hours of operation. In terms of setbacks, I do believe, sorry, I have these out of order, for setbacks, I, what the proposal is, is to adopt what the state statute allows you to adopt for restriction, and so that's what's in front of you here. Do you want me to keep going, or do you want discussion?
Just go, just go ahead and go through them quickly, and then we'll, we'll come back to, we'll go back right down your list.
And then the next one's hours of operation. This slide is updated to reflect the registration ordinance, and so retail sales would be prohibited from 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. That as closely matches the alcohol sales as possible, which is, I believe, the direction the board wanted to go. And then last but not least is back to the permit type. So here's our infamous spreadsheet.
And if you don't mind, I am going to stop you for one moment, just because of all the different permit types, I know that could go a little bit, I mean, so the suggestion was made by Commissioner Bertram that perhaps at least to start, we go with interim use. I'm wondering if anybody has a problem with that, and it sounds like some of the other counties near us are doing that, would that be acceptable?
It would be, would, what's the goal, Jeff?
The, Madam Chair, Angie can explain probably better than I the difference, but for me, the interim use permit is, it doesn't, if you, a conditional use permit, again, the way I understand it is, it stays with the property, even though the licensure has to be different. The interim use permit has a defined timeline, it ends, and so, this is so new, we're going to be, we're going to be adjusting this ordinance, God knows how many times in the next year, anyway, so we want it to be, we want it to, it's going to have to be somewhat fluid, but on the same token, my opinion is, we should have it as rigid as we can. And interim is more rigid than a conditional use, in my opinion, and obviously, I'm happy to hear that the other counties, that we get some kind of an idea of what they're doing, they must have had the same type of conversations, I would say.
Yeah, well, thanks, Madam Chair. The only thing I would interject with that, too, is what Angie, I believe, said last time, is they still have to apply to the Office of Cannabis Management to get the license or whatever it would be, so whether, if it's a conditional use permit, they'd still, if they don't get the license, they're probably not going to do, buy the property. Correct? Because the conditional use permit goes with land, so they'd be buying the land, or, let's say, the facility, to do what they're going to do, but if they can't get the license, that conditional use permit does them no good.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ber.
And I think, from what I remember at the last meeting, there was some discussion related to the duration, as, you know, shown on the screen, I think there was concern that instead of it being a date, that the permit would expire, it would be an event, and the event would be tied to ownership. So the duration would be tied to number two, which is the ownership change. That is what I heard Commissioner Bertram, you say about your concern about wanting to make these interim, because then you could tie it more towards an event, which could be a change of ownership.
And Madam Chair, that's important. Again, who runs these and who owns these could be an issue, and we'll have some input on that, under a interim use permit, under an IUP.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you have thoughts on this?
I just, I would, if you think this is going to be a one-and-done type of action, rulemaking, et cetera, I would point you to all of our collective experience with liquor regulation that's been going on for, well, half a century, anyway. So you'll be coming back to this, and I don't know, I don't have any ideas for a solution on that, but it has all of the earmarks of something like that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah, and I guess I could go along with the interim use, it's, I just think there's, either way, there's a, you have to get the license in order to, if you're going to purchase property to do what was already there, and you don't get the license, are you going to still purchase the property and do what you want it to do?
Well, and I was, you know, for me, I mean, absolutely agree with that, and because of that extra piece of license that we go buy it, I, I think that because we're just starting out, us going down the interim use for now makes sense. I think there are some parts, some of these, that will make more sense as conditional eventually, and others that might stay be making more sense as interim, but I don't think we know that right now, and as you were, I guess everybody's pointing out, we're going to be back here about some other things, so I, I would be comfortable with us starting that way, but I think we're going to need to really relook at, like, which of the different categories really should run with the land versus not, knowing that they're going to have to get that license, so. I don't, I don't know if we, why don't we get through each of yours, and then maybe we can get a motion, but unless you want to do a motion right now on the interim part.
Might be less complicated if we do it piece by piece.
That's fine, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we go the, use the interim use permit.
Okay, is there a second? All right, seeing no further discussion and recognizing we will be back on this at some point in the future, all in favor, as you just pointed out, all in favor.
For a half a century.
Well, I don't think MS will be here for that half.
Well, we won't be here, but.
All in favor of, at least initially, starting with interim use, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, we're going to go with interim. Members, I don't know where you're at, I thought the setbacks made a lot of sense. It seemed like that was pretty close to where we landed last time, does anybody want to propose something different?
And Madam Chair, just a clarification, Angie, you and I had an email with a city official about what if the township does it in the township, and the daycare is, you know, 300 feet in the city, just explain that, because that was a good question, and it might be helpful to clarify how that works. So even though it would be in the township, in a township, the city, the setback, explain that daycare schools.
Yeah, this came up with Richmond and Monson Township. Go ahead, Ms. Ber.
Madam Chair, so as I understood the question when Mr. Hemisch was here, it was, would set, would the county setbacks go into the city? And the answer is, unless the city adopts the same setback as the county.
Right.
They're not, they're not bound by what we adopt. So for example, let's say, I think.
Childcare centers was his example.
Yeah, daycare, or even the school in Richmond is very close to the city boundary, and so if someone in Monson Township wanted a cannabis business closer than 1,000 feet to the school in Richmond, the answer would be no, because this ordinance doesn't say that the school has to be located in the township.
Because this ordinance doesn't say that the school has to be located in the township. It's just a school, any school.
Right.
So if any city wants that same standard, then they need to adopt in their zoning code, something like this.
So essentially, this is us having a say over the parts that we can, I hate to say control, but we can do an ordinance around, not the parts we can't. And as you've been really pretty good at saying, we hope that other communities adopt, like, the same thing that we're doing. Yeah, I think these are the numbers that St. Cloud is looking at too. I don't know about the others.
Well, can you explain what someone, well, let's think of it from the provider's perspective? So if, if this is going to be applied to prefer this, which is a regulation that they abide by, be determined where it's located, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, good clarification.
So do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, let's, I don't think there's...
I'll move accepting the hours that staff is, or the setbacks.
I'll second that.
Hours is coming, yeah.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Notch and a second by Commissioner Bertram to adopt the proposed setbacks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, we've adopted those. Hours of operation. You've been very thoughtful about this, so we really appreciate it. Obviously, we can make changes as time goes on. Does, do people feel comfortable with what's being proposed, what we see in front of us?
And Madam Chair, I, you know...
Not the topic, because we don't feel comfortable.
Right, we don't, we didn't expect to get a lot of input on this because nobody knows. And, you know, part, I think I'll wait until we're done with asking a couple more general questions. But things continue to unfold weekly, you know, daily to some degree. So we didn't expect to get a lot of input. I think there was a lot of good dialogue, from what I saw and heard, at the Association of Townships. Brenda certainly was busy and Mike Curry did an excellent job of engaging and a lot of questions to him. So this is all, you know, nobody knows.
Right. And the proposal that's in front of us, we'd make this close to what alcohol is. So if, looking for a motion to either approve this or make a change?
I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve the proposed hours of operation. Is there a second?
I'll second that. You know, just because we can't predict an outcome, no reason to do some, not to do something.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of adopting the hours of operation, proposed hours of operation. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, it's adopted. Done those parts now.
Yes.
Now go to your next part.
Okay, great, Madam Chair. So on page, I'll start with... Page, oh, sorry, it's H1 is the item. Packet page 130, this is where the performance standards start. And so we'll have one set of performance standards for all the cannabis businesses. And the one thing I wanted to point out to you is item number U. Yesterday, I met with a property owner in Sterns County who is proposing to open up a micro business in Sterns County. And so he, and I went through this and had some good conversation. So one of the things I wanted to explain a little bit was number U. And that states that micro businesses and meso businesses shall have a cultivation and manufacturing endorsement. That wording is going to change a little bit, because the wording isn't, there is not a manufacturing endorsement with Office Cannabis Management. It's called something else. It's called extraction and concentration or production of customer products. So just know that you, the wording of U is going to change a bit. And it's also going to say shall have a cultivation and/or. So we're going to go with the or. And why this is important to kind of understand what this would look like, if you remember what the micro business is, it's where you get to do, the license at the state allows you to do a little bit of everything. It allows you to grow, manufacture, and/or sell retail. And so it's, in order to closely match our concept of aid-oriented business and other rural businesses, we didn't want someone to apply for a micro business license at the state and go out into the township and sell retail. We also wanted them to have to either manufacture or cultivate. And so there's, there's some, a lot of questions related to that. And if a micro is going to be located in a different jurisdiction and have their retail license there, again, no one has answers to these things. But in order for our ordinance and the intent of the ordinance to make sense, U is going to change a little bit. And so I'll, I'll be rewriting that for the final signature.
Madam Chair, did, did you say an applicant, a potential applicant brought that to...
Yes.
And, and again, this is just me being me. That's exactly when you said nobody has the answers. The, in my opinion, the applicants got this figured out because they may not have the best of motives. I mean, people know how to work around and through things. And I'm skeptical, yep, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to, and I can see the county attorney staff, Chad and Brenda go, oh, did you think of that? Shoot, we didn't think of that. That's going to happen. And again, that's when we're going to make some changes. But unfortunately, if we don't have that in place, and then an application's made, that's going to be the rule, the land of the rule, the rule of the land.
Well, I think, I share a lot of what you, what you just said. And this, the statute was, it's kind of like, here's your menu of options. You can pick between these. What's proposed right now doesn't allow that. So no matter how many good legal eyes look at things, sometimes they miss something like that. And I, it could be a perfectly upright person who is looking at this and thinking, I'm going to do cultivation or manufacture, I'm not going to do both. And the statute allows a micro business to pick.
And further, Madam Chair, the person I talked to is actually here and was maybe going to speak during the hearing. But he wasn't bringing this up as a loophole, per se, because it wouldn't actually apply to their business type anyway. It was just more of, hey FYI, that's not actually how it's worded.
Right, it did get caught.
So that was helpful. And so we'll keep learning with each other.
And Madam Chair, like I said, I'm skeptical for a lot of reasons. I'm sure there's going to be some good, you know, good operators or intent is good. But, you know, Commissioner Lenzmar always refers at the alcohol. The people that had the best of intentions with alcohol weren't a problem. But when you started doing it to minors and a lot of other things, well, then that creates problems. So there's going to be people with good intentions, but it, it, you know, that's why I'm skeptical. Because there's going to, I'm going to focus on the ones that aren't, don't have the best intentions and hopefully prepare the best we can, and we're doing that, so.
Yeah, so this might be ironically one of the few times where we're going to be in a different place. I want to focus on the 90% who want to do right and that we have safeguards for the 10% that don't, instead of making it so hard that nobody, because we're so worried about the 10%. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Notch and then Commissioner Lenzmar.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, Madam. Just for clarification, going forward, whoever is in the queue and has the license or whatever it may be, if we change ordinance down the road, they're grandfathered in, per se. Correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, whatever they do with, the state doesn't really care about local ordinances, right? So if they're in the queue and they're...
Or let's say they're operating.
In the lottery.
Let's say they're operating.
Okay.
And then a year from now, we review everything and say, oh, we're going to change this to this. But they're already operating, they don't have to make a change. Because they're, like gravel pits are grandfathered in, it'll apply to anybody going forward. Correct?
That's correct, yep, same concept would apply, yep. Commissioner Lenzmar?
Yeah, it's, I could go on on this, but I could summarize unintended consequences. So we don't know what those are. They'll certainly will come to pass and future boards will have to deal with it.
Right, so then just to make this go full circle, as we're going forward to adopting today, U would be and/or, and we will see that in the final thing that will be signed.
Correct.
Correct, okay, okay. All right, what else do you need us to go through on this part?
Madam Chair, nothing else on the zoning side.
Okay, so we do need to approve what we, we've done the three, the three decision points that you said. We know that that's an and/or. What we're looking for now is a motion to approve the ordinance as modified.
I did have a question, Madam Chair, and I'm not sure...
Can we just get a motion in and then do it?
Sure.
Okay, did you have a motion or no?
No, I was just going to mention it's 680 was the ordinance.
Yep, so ordinance 680. Okay, there's a motion. Looking for a second.
I can second that.
Okay, great.
I want to hear it, Jeff.
Yeah, no, now we're going to move to, exactly.
The public places banned, did we address that, like in parks?
It's just different ordinance.
It's a...
We did that before.
Okay, we've done that.
Yep.
It's hard to track all this stuff.
I know, I know.
And then now this week, the state, well, the headline was state pot market rollout hits a snag. The lottery delay, does that affect anything? That's what happened this week. Now that, that lottery delay doesn't affect anything we're doing here.
Ms. Burke?
Madam Chair, not directly. The legislature didn't reconvene to change anything, so we still need to operate under the fact that January 1st, we can't have a moratorium anymore. We need to have some official controls. Now indirectly, I think that court case will definitely impact what we're seeing, because this could delay projects.
Right, so we're doing, we're adopting because we otherwise, I hate to call it Wild West, but we'll have Wild West otherwise. We're trying to put some parameters around this, January, knowing there could be changes. And like you were saying, I mean, we may not see any for a while, because they might not be able to do their lottery.
And then Madam Chair, at the last meeting, I asked, are we, and I saw Shelley write it down, about what other instances that came up, that have come up already, like this delay in the lottery? We've addressed, you know, when, when something's come up, I'm sure, like this lottery delay, I'm sure some folks within the county have went back and looked and said, okay, does that affect this? Or how does this affect something? Or, because there's, like I said, weekly, something's kind of come up with this. So again, I'm, I'm a 10,000-foot view guy, so I'm not flying at your level. And just looking for some assurances that we're kind of tracking all that, monitoring that and doing the best we can.
We're on it.
Yep.
We're, we're keeping...
See, that's what I wanted you to say, thank you.
That's good. We're going to do this one first and then we're going to go to the other one. Correct, we, yep, we don't have a motion in front of us. So we have 680, so ordinance 680, we have a motion and a second on this. Further questions or comments on this one, and then we're going to go back to the other one and bring those two back up.
Do we need a motion?
No, we have a motion in a second, okay. All in favor of approving ordinance number 689. Do we need to say then a part about the number 439 for cannabis businesses, 680?
Madam Chair, it would be consideration of ordinance number 680.
That's what I thought, that's what I said, okay. So 680, all right, all in favor. This is not about whether we approve what, what will be regulating under this ordinance. This is about just the ordinance and the parameters. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. All right, this one is done. Thank, thank you. We're just going to keep thanking you, because we know that this is, as Commissioner Bertram just pointed out, things keep changing all the time and we appreciate your work on this. Now we're going to go back to the first one, which is ordinance 679.
Did you notice, Madam Chair, Chad looked as, the wilder as Angie did. No, he's nervous that Angie's gone. Their tag team is...
We're close, we're close.
All right, so we've closed the public hearing.
All right, we're now, well, we have placed this ordinance before the board a number of times. We've also placed a clean copy of it on the website, on the notice section, so that people would be able to see it and review it online with hyperlinks actually to any citation in this, in that ordinance, so they could actually look at the cited, the other ordinances that were cited and the statutes that were cited. We've brought along copy, hard copies of the ordinance tonight for anybody who was in the room who wanted to review the ordinance while we were discussing it. We have no additional changes to what we've discussed at the past meeting. And just as a quick review, we talked about the fact that we've added the events portion of the ordinance, section five. At section 6.1, we modified the language of how the limitation of retail operations, the 13 number of retail operations that the county is allowed to, to limit retail operations, to how it would affect the other local units of government as being basically, it would provide a cap if they wished to utilize it as a cap, but did not prevent them, these other local units of government, from adding additional retail operations if they wished to. And then we made a change to the limitation of hours of sale, which basically has, is the same limitation of hours that you just went over with Angie on the zoning portion.
Right, thank you. Do members have any follow-up questions on this one? Otherwise, we have seen this a few times and made those, those changes. And we'll be looking for a motion to approve. Recognizing we will be back, because some of this, including the events, I can't imagine we're not going to be back on this.
I'll move ordinance number 679.
Thank you. There's a motion on ordinance number 679, is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay.
I'm dubious if we're solving anything, but what the hell, let's give it a rip.
Good point, good point, okay. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion at this time until we revisit it. All in favor of adopting ordinance number 679, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, we are done with this for now. Truly, again, we all very much appreciate you paying attention to those details, as well as the big picture and working with our many jurisdictions that are even within the county as well as surrounding ones, so thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to administration. I believe we're at U now, the ARPA funds, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the next agenda item is what we call the closeout of the ARPA fund, which, which, which means that you would use a couple of categories allowed by the federal, federal regulations to, to, to reserve those funds or put them into the general fund. We're not really recommending a closeout, we're recommending that you hold those aside for future ARPA-eligible projects. So we keep within the spirit of the law, but it allows us to go beyond the December. This, we have to have all these funds obligated by the end of the year. Any funds that we don't have obligated, we would have to return. So you have a little over $1 million of the 30, of the somewhat over $31 million that is considered unobligated at this point. That includes two projects that you already approved but, but haven't been spent. One is, one of the clean water projects was $150,000 in the Soil and Water Conservation District. The one project that they had planned fell apart, and so they're still looking. So part of this would be you still allowing, allowing the Soil and Water Conservation District to find another project. The second one is broadband. We have $264,000 unspent of the $16 million that you obligated or that you approved. As I've told you before, we, we have two request for proposals out and those, we did get a good showing. We got three responses to the request for proposals for the, for Collegeville Township. It looks like we would be in the county cost of maybe $600,000 if we did that without any state help. And then we had another one that, that is like 15, 16 premises in Wakefield Township. And that one looks like a county cost of about 80... and that one looks like a county cost of about eighty, eighty-eight thousand dollars, which to me seems very doable outside of, outside of any state grants. I need to do a little more analysis of those proposals and bring them back to you at your next meeting. But this, this action that's being recommended would reserve that 264 and additional dollars if you did want to put more, more of the ARP dollars beyond the 16 million. The two other things that are being recommended to obligate is one for our co-responder program to fund our own deputy assigned to the program. And then, something that you haven't really heard much about was the Anna Marie's program. Anna Marie sponsors a supervised visitation program that occurs in this building. It's a critical service to some of our departments, and they were hoping to get a grant to fund that for the coming year. The grant was not awarded, $150,000, we'd keep that in place until we can make an application for another, another grant, which we're confident we could receive. The other, the one other thing that we've talked about, some ARP dollars may or may not be used for is the Avivo Village, which is the homeless shelter. We're, we have a meeting with, with the Avivo folks in a couple of weeks to kind of revive those discussions. We also, we also have other dollars that, I get the acronyms mixed, mixed up, but there's housing funds that we received from the state for the last year, and we have roughly four, over $400,000 in that, that we, that we could use on the Avivo project if it happens. So, those are just some of the things that, well, this recommendation includes, again, holding, obligating the, again, the 150,000, what's remaining in broadband, and then about, then the rest of the funds, which really is more like 700 or 400, 491 if you factor all those out. And what you, and what you would do is just designate those as being used, as I said earlier, in the revenue loss category or expenditures the county has incurred for governmental services. But, we wouldn't just wash those in the general fund, we'll hold these funds, and we'll call it an ARP remaining funds so that the board can make allocations in the future.
Well, how long can we tie those?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
By, 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 by doing this, these, these funds would really be unlimited. We wouldn't even have to spend them by the end of twenty, 2026. So, it, it is freeing that up really for you to do anything with it, but we're recommending you stay with the spirit of the law and use them on ARPA-eligible projects.
Thanks. So, on those two township, do you know how many unserved, underserved?
Yeah, in the Wakefield, there's a, I'll hang out like fifteen.
Okay.
In the Collegeville, there's more like 220.
Okay, because somebody just called me today, in Millwood Township, there's two streets that, Arvick had a grant for County 127, which is north and south.
Uh huh.
And east of there, there's two roads by Birch Lake that are in no man's land, and they're screaming like, how can this be? But.
We should have.
So, if we did a little bit more in case Arvick comes and tries to cover them.
I'll, I'll have to look at it, if you can get me a little more precise location, I'll look at it because as we've looked at that before, I, we should have that covered under that previous grant, but there could have been a glitch, but we can take a look at it.
Maybe the.
I think Millwood, wasn't Millwood the one that we only had two in?
Yeah, it was just that little strip going.
So, I, I think, I think they're, they're covered not in the original ARPA grant, but in the one where we, where we did the, did some of the ones that were scattered about, I think.
The later one?
I think so.
Okay, because this guy works for Arvick, and he doesn't have it. Because he's on the road.
It's kind of like what Senator Howk did, any.
Happy to check on it, but I think they're probably covered.
Oh, maybe they'll be covered.
Yeah, I think they are.
Okay, well, if you can get back. So, at this point, you're looking for a motion that they would be with both of those categories, right, the revenue loss category and for expenses the county has incurred.
Correct.
As a governmental services. And I, I will say personally, I appreciate that, try to keep this within the spirit because this is really generational, if not longer than that, funds, and for us to make sure that we're utilizing them in a way that's gonna make sense. We've done pretty well with that, so personally, I appreciate that.
I'll make the request and motion.
Great, thank you, there's been a motion by Commissioner Bertram, is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 What's the timeline on that again?
The motion's approved. Now, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, we need to obligate these funds before the end of the year. That's why we're bringing them to you now. But what you've done today, we, we will be able to put off any expenditures even into 2026.
That's what I want, okay.
So, members, we're gonna be moving to closed section, given we have both that and hopefully a short break before we do our TNT. Come back for that, we do have time for brief issues by Commissioner. If anybody's got anything really like urgent or specific you want to make sure the public knows about? Nope.
Does the heat turn off on here at 4:30?
I was gonna say, it's a little cool in here, all right. An issue by Commissioner would be the heat in this room. All right, seeing none, we are going to adjourn for our closed meeting, right?
Yeah, not adjourned, but.
Adjourned, we're gonna recess for our closed meeting.
Yes.
So, thank you for all of you who have been here, just letting the bathroom know that we're gonna move to our closed meeting.
Don't, because I somehow wasn't the same place either first all the time. It was like, can you mix it up? So you started.
It wasn't.
Okay, all right. All right, we're back from our closed session.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Thorson?
Yes, we recommend the board approves entering into a contract with MinPee Patrol, LALS Jail Dispatch, LALS Supervisors, AFSMI Attorneys, AFSMI Highway Parks and Maintenance, AFSMI Human Services, and M&amp;A, Teamsters General Unit, and approved non-union policy to reflect similar language changes.
Great. Looking for a motion?
Sure move.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
I could second that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bertram and Commissioner Landsmeyer.
It doesn't mean that we approve of every, you know, period and comma and so forth. We gotta move.
All right, all right. All in favor of the motion of approving the context signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. They are passed. Will you please, I am guessing some of them might be watching now, but given the time, they might not. Please thank both the negotiating team, but also to all of those who worked on the staff side. This is, it's a big deal to have this done now. We really appreciate their work. I mean, we've got a lot of amazing people who are really putting a lot of effort in for the citizens of Stearns County, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. We will do that, notify them as well. So again, thank you for your cooperation. Have a great day.
And so, I believe at this time we can adjourn this meeting, and then we come back for our truth in taxation or truth in budgeting at six. So we are adjourned, and we will see you back at six.
Jennifer, do you guys want these back?
It's public now, isn't it?
You can keep it.
Oh, okay.
If you ask me.
...
We are back now for our next meeting, which is our annual Truth in Taxation presentation. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Williams and the team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this is our annual Truth in Budgeting or Truth in Taxation meeting. The slide up there is a reminder to anybody that's come into the meeting that this session and this public hearing is really talk about the county's budget and the county's tax levy. It's not for discussing market value. The notice that goes out has, of course, market value in there. To appeal a market valuation is a totally different process. We have some of our county assessor staff here, out in the other room, that can speak to anybody that has a concern about their market valuation. So with that, we'll get started with the...I don't have the...thank you. So we're going to talk a little bit about the budget process and, of course, the budget and the levy. The budget process involves a lot of people, thanks to the board. It takes a lot of the board's time and effort. It takes a leadership team, a lot of time and effort. A lot of staff is involved in this. And then we have our budget committee, which you have in front of you here, Jill, Sarah, and Randy and myself. And that's who you'll be hearing from tonight. You won't have to hear my voice all night. So if we go to the next slide, you can see the...ah, that one. Thank you. Again, just for people that might be here, this is the type of notice that goes out. The notice goes out and tells about if you're in a town or a city or township. It says when that public hearing is. In your school district, it says that with that. And then, of course, the county one is being held tonight. So, for example, if you live in the city of St. Cloud, their hearing was last night. And again, we're here to talk about the county's budget and tax levy, not market values. So we'll go into the budget with the process. And we added a couple of steps with the county board this year. So there was a couple more sessions before the county board. The county board took up the budget at the end of the July, the only meeting in August, in September, a couple of meetings, and then tonight. And then the board will adopt the final budget on December 17th. You really are not supposed to adopt the budget tonight. You need to wait till after the hearing. We do all this with the county's mission and values in mind. We have a mission that says we're going to provide exceptional public services to assure a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. And really, that's very broad and encompassing. But as you all know, we do a lot of different things here. I boil this mission statement down to we try to make people's lives better in everything we do. Our values, we have five values that we keep in mind as we go through this budget process. We have three that I would say are really how we treat our customers and clients and one another, and that's responsive, approachable, and fair and equitable. Our professional value, we really highlight when we talk about being professional, is that we strive for continuous improvement. I think that's unique in being a professional and unique. We do things really well here in Stearns County, but I think that's because we all know that we can do things a little better, even as good as we do things now. And then collaborative, again, I think that one speaks for itself. We serve the public best with teamwork and in collaboration with our community partners and interdepartmentally. And that's how we pull this budget together. We do not do this in silos. Just a little budget overview. You can see that the budget is showing an 11% increase in revenues and expenditures. It's a little skewed because we have a very high year in road construction, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. One reason for that is we have a town line road in there, which is really a pass through while we're administering it. Jody gets to do that. But there's $9 million in revenue for that project that really is not our infrastructure. And you can see here that the levy, as you've seen before, shows an increase of 4.1%. Another number there that looks a little goofy is the other revenues. It looks like there's a big drop in revenues. If we look back to 2024, there was a fair amount of...there was over $2 million in ARP dollars that were transferred into the highway department. And then there's $800,000 that you'll see later that isn't recognized in revenue here. That's really an increase in human services. So that number really looks a little skewed. If you look at the expenditures, which is the next slide, and that shows you, again, road construction from $29 million to $42 million, which is a significant increase. And so most of the tables that we've shown you in the past factors that out, so you can get a better comparison of what our operating budget really is, how it's really changing. And that's about...that is a 5% increase in expenditures from $160 million to $168 million. The next slide really shows where the expenditures go. And again, this is a little bit skewed because of that high road construction year. If you took that out, you'd actually see that public safety is 28% of the budget. Human services is 41% of the budget. So you add those two up, and that's 69%. So that's the bulk of the budget. And then the general fund would be the next one at 15%. So public safety and human services, of course mandated services, are making up the lion's share of our budget. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah at this time to talk a little more about some of the detail.
All right. Good evening. Sarah Uch, Finance Director in the Auditor's Office. Excuse me. So this first slide here is a little bit about some of the levy drivers that we saw during this year. And we like to highlight just a couple of these. The top one is it's a non-election year. So every year we have a non...I shouldn't say non-election year. I should say non-presidential election year. We do have a reduction in costs associated with that, which helps with the levy impact. As you'll recall, we had the Housing Trust Fund in our levy in 2024, but we put that into a separate levy under the HRA this year. So that shows positively to the levy. And then the other one I just wanted to remind you of was that reduced capital levy. So in the past, we were levying 3.2 million for capital projects, old debt, those types of things. We did reduce that by 1.5 million to a new level of 1.7 million. So those things kind of helped us keep the levy lower for other things that may have increased. On this expenditure breakdown, I will note that this slide is slightly different than the one in the handout. So we found a correction that we just made last minute. But if you look down the right-hand side of that, at just the percentage increases, you'll notice that really things did remain flat, other than personnel. You heard about the personnel items earlier today, and that makes up 7.5 million of the increase. And the total increase in operating expenses without road construction is 8.2 million. So really substantially, it was personnel, thanks to the work of the departments for keeping everything else flat or decreasing. Outside agencies are something I think you've seen in your executive summary and are familiar with. We like to show this on what we did in 2024, what was requested by those agencies, and then where we have landed so far. And you'll notice just a modest increase, excuse me, of about 49,000 in those combined. Each year, we do a use of fund balance analysis. They're kind of offset. So sometimes you'll see that net number places. But we're increasing the fund balance in capital projects, as I talked about. We used to have debts that we would levy for. Now we're levying for capital projects in in foresight for what's to come with the Justice Center and other things that we have. And then we have these use of fund balance categories. The highway construction one, I just want to point that out. What that is is local option sales tax and wheelage tax. So we collect a certain amount every year, but we don't always spend it in the year we collect it. So sometimes we'll, you know, we'll have more state aid projects or more different kinds of projects, and we won't use our local option sales tax. And then the next year, it's a use of fund balance to use those. So that's that factor there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
Hi, Madam Chair and Board members. So I appreciate the ability to participate in tonight's hearing. Being new to the county, I offered to do discussion about the projects rather than the number crunching. So you're going to get a numbers break for the next few slides to talk about some of the big initiatives that your departments are undertaking. So we asked the department heads to share some of their major projects for 2025. Some of these are specific to a department, but a lot of them are really leaning into the values of collaborative work, which is one of your five values. And as we go through some of these projects, we're highlighting which of the five areas these projects highlight for the values that you have identified for your county and your service to the residents here. So starting with road construction, you'll note that this is a major increase in spending for the year. And a big part of that is because we're receiving $9 million to go into that town line road construction project. So that project, we're serving as a facilitator for. And that's between three townships and the municipality of Sartell. And we're serving as a pass through facilitator for that. And so overall, only 5% of the road construction budget is actually tied to the levy. All of that other funding is coming from different areas of revenue. So their road construction team does a good job of finding other ways of paying for this important service for the county. When it comes to human services, they identified three major project areas for 2025 that they wanted you to have some more information on. One is the new prevention unit, which is going to transform their approach to child welfare in the county. It's going to be a proactive upstream approach, especially focusing on truancy, and the goal is to reduce trauma and to minimize an amount of out of home placement, while at the same time improving the connection between children and families. So it's a partnership between JCAT and PSOP. And it's going to be, what I said earlier, a preventative approach that's more upstream and will hopefully save money for the county long term, but more importantly, reduce the trauma that children and family experience in this area. The other area or another project they're working on is social workers in the jail. So they added a second social social worker in 2024. They found that they have tripled the interactions for the inmates and the social workers. So it's been a success in the sense that there's need there and that we're doing a better job of meeting that need. So this work will continue through the next year. The third project identified is just upgrading a lot of the technology that human services use. And this will improve the interaction that our residents have engaging with the programs that our human services team runs. And they will be doing this in partnership with IT as well. Moving on to environmental services, there are two areas that they wanted us to highlight. One is just increasing the hours of availability at the hazardous household waste facility. So in 2025, they will be adding more morning and evening hours and also Saturdays. They did a really great job of evaluating how they could redesign staff schedules in order to make this happen. And they will be watching engagement with residents to see if this is a success and if it's a something we should continue beyond 2025. In addition, for 2025, they're going to offer up to 30 opportunities for cities and towns to host a mobile collection event. And this will be happening over the 25 weeks that kind of make up our good weather time of year in the spring, summer, and fall. When it comes to IT, one of the big things is Workday. And Workday is not just IT, but a massive enterprise wide project that's taking a lot of dedicated time from our HR department, from our auditors department, and from our IT department. In addition to all the managers across the county are engaging in making this a productive transition to a new system that's going to really streamline how we do our management payroll benefits, recruitment, and onboarding. In addition to Workday, there's also a couple of projects that IT is working with the sheriff on, in addition to helping us with improving our contract lifecycle management and AV upgrades for all conference rooms. They'll also be doing a lot of work with the Justice Center and getting all those systems online. That will be a pretty complex project that IT will be focusing on for 2025. In property services, they're going to be launching two new online systems for residents or one for residents that specifically pertains to land notifications. So this is a free service that property owners can sign up for. So it enables a person to find out if their name, business, or their property ID has been used in a document that's been registered or recorded with the county. It's going to help with mitigating any sort of mortgage or real estate fraud. And once again, is a free service for residents if they want to sign up for it. The second IT upgrade is a mobile assessment software implementation. Right now, the assessor team uses a solution that they've done a lot of their own patching of. And so this will replace that system and hopefully make it a more efficient upgraded process. And of course, one of our biggest projects this year will be the groundbreaking for the new Justice Center. And it's a huge thank you to all the county staff for the education and outreach that they did with our constituents to help them understand the importance of this project and the options for how to fund this project. This project will be funded with a 3.8 cent sales tax that was approved in the 2024 general election. As you can see here, here are some basic schematics about what will be included in the center. It's much more than just a jail. It'll include the sheriff's facility, court's facility, offices for the county attorney, human services hub, and community conference rooms. And in addition to the groundbreaking with this, our staff has have already been undergoing significant work on making sure that the facility meets the future needs of the county. And a huge thank you to the staff in the attorney's office, the jail, the patrol unit, the courts, facilities, human services, probation, and IT for all the hours they've dedicated to making the design the way we need it to be for our future residents. One of the last areas I want to highlight is our parks. There's several big projects they're undertaking. The biggest one probably is the Kramer Lake Wildwood Phase 1 development. So this will be hiring on an engineer and helping with design to make the project make the park more accessible to residents. So adding picnic shelter areas, connecting areas with paved trails, adding a non-motorized boat launch amongst other amenities. A few things that weren't highlighted on the slides, emergency management's going to be undertaking their hazard mitigation planning. So this is a two-year process that's required by FEMA to do every five years. And they're hoping for a lot of positive community engagement on this. The VSO office is also going to be exploring expanding into a second location in the western part of the county, most likely in Melrose. And with that, I have completed my report on 2025 projects.
Madam Chairman of the County. So the first one is we're going to look at some comparisons. How our levy compares to both the MICA counties, comparison counties, and the neighboring counties. As you can see, they're on the 6.6, 5.8, and 5.6. There we go. And we're at, of course, 4.14. The next slide. So per capita, this is something we look at too, whereas our levy per capita, and we're the eighth lowest with Dakota being the lowest and Traverse being the highest. So we got pretty good numbers there for per capita. And then property tax, so our county tax rate with this levy will go up slightly, 0.76%, so below 1%. And this is a little change from preliminary levy. Preliminary levy, this actually was going to be going down. But with the state assessed properties, there's been a number of lawsuits that has lowered their values. Also, we are in the process of implementing a new tax system. So some of the maintenance was a little delayed there. And then, of course, always homestead and TIF keeps continuing throughout the year. So that also affects that. But really, the biggest driver here was state assessed properties and those value changes. Our base, so we have just over 256 million of new construction, which is a very healthy number. The tax from that is the 1.2 million, which makes up about a third of the the increase in the levy. So a third of it is coming from new construction and a new base. This is the tax base change, the market value change for each property type. Residential is the lowest. You can see at 3.5. They've been higher in in previous years. So they are a little lower this year. And the rest is between 5 and 9%. So pretty even spread after that. Then overall, we're at 4.9% of change in estimated market value. And this is the levy change per taxing jurisdictions. For the city, on average, they went up 5%. You'll see the special taxing districts is a little bit bigger percentage change, but the dollars there are smaller. So that is the HRAs, a number of small things, including the Housing Trust Fund. That's probably one of the bigger drivers. So the net net change in tax overall on the bottom is a 3.54%. So looking at just the county taxes and the change, and this assumes no property value changes. So everybody stays the same. And it's not supposed to represent a reality. It's just showing the effects of the change in the tax rate. Now residential homestead and ag has special things that I'll go over. But you can see the other areas all went up the 0.76%, which is the increase in our tax rate. Okay, so then this is the change with the average change in those property types. So residential homestead on average went up 3.59%. And you can see the changes there. They have some other special things. Agricultural homestead had more significant changes. So theirs was a class rate change. They're at 0.5% until they get to just over 2 million. And now that went up to 3.5 million. So there's more relief there. And then it goes to 1%. So people under 2%, 2 million, excuse me, didn't get any relief. But everybody over that $2 million did see some relief. And both that and the residential homestead change, although they're positive for the people, that does affect, you know, the tax base and and a tax shift, right? So that savings by them is picked up by others. And this is a residential homestead. So this also changed for this year. So it maxed out at an exclusion amount of just over 30,000. Now it's at $38,000. So there's an extra 8,000 of exclusion. And that also now goes up into 517,000. Or before, that went to 413,000. So the homestead exclusion did help more people and and also provided more relief. But homesteaded property, as you can see, really, there's three drivers of that: market value, the homestead exclusion, and then the change in tax rate. So that's a little more complicated for residential homesteads. But but pretty good numbers for for those people this year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. And then just the last couple of points we want to make is everything you've seen up until today. Well, when you when you adopted the preliminary level, we had a certain level of expenditure, certain level of revenues. And since that time, there's two things, two two changes that'll be made and a number of one of them is in human services. As we get every year, we get notified of some grant changes or new grants later, you know, after you set the preliminary levy. And so you can this slide shows that since September, we've got an $800,000 change in expenditures and revenues. Now, this is this will not affect the levy. So the levy is the same as you adopted it, but we will build these changes in for these four or five grants into the numbers you see in December for the final adoption of the budget. We wanted to make sure that you saw that and that you're going to see those changes the next time we meet. The next the second piece is that, as you know, we had lump sums in the budget to account for employee costs because we were under negotiations and we didn't really know what the final numbers would be. So now what we'll do is we'll take those lump sums and spread them out throughout the departments and the funds. And so you're going to see some change in the in the road and bridge levy, some change in the park levy, some change in the general fund levy, but it'll all net out. And you'll see the same in expenditures. So the real picture of the budget will be after we spread those costs out. But again, it won't affect the levy. And in in the executive summary that was provided for this, the last table in there shows what that final budget will that final recommended budget will look like with these changes, with the with the costs for union contact spread and for the changes in the human services budget. And that concludes our presentation. As you just heard, the budget is actually going up 11%. Again, that includes a large increase in in the road construction. The levy increases 4.1%. As Randy said, the tax capacity is going up and the tax rate is going up just a little bit. And that's more that is different than preliminary levy, which which Randy explained. Some of the numbers you see for use of fund balance are big, and that's because of what Sarah explained is there's a use of sales tax dollars in in road construction. So really, what I consider a use of fund balance is is about $1 million and a half. With that, we can answer any questions, and you can open the public hearing.
I say we can open the public hearing. Let's go ahead and do that. Opening the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on on the truth and budget, truth and taxation, the proposed budget? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak or comment? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak or comment? Do we have anything to add to the record that was submitted separately?
We do not.
Okay. All right. That was the public hearing part. I know that's the main part of this for today. But if there's any questions from any board members, we certainly can be asking those now. And we'll be coming back on the 17th.
We will bring you back a final recommendation on the 17th. And that's your last meeting. So you need to adopt.
No, we need to. And as you pointed out at the beginning of this, we can't adopt it today. We've got specific timelines. And I want to make sure to be thinking not just...
Just to be clear, right, the final adoption will happen on the 17th.
Right. It will happen on the 17th. Yep. I want to thank the four of you, but also just the on behalf of all of us, the many, many staff who have put time into this. And certainly thank board members for the time and the questions. We we kind of end up asking, acting as the default, okay, here's something I'm hearing. Here's a question I have. And it's hard for when there's individual kinds of questions. And sometimes even figuring out the numbers can be a little bit tricky. We certainly appreciate that. And with that, let's...
Just one point, Madam Chair. In Jill's presentation on page 11, on the Justice Center groundbreaking, just to be clear to the public, the schematic design included all those things. And now we're going to start having the conversation on the 17th once those numbers come in on where things are and working around that. So that that is not finalized yet. And so just this is accurate. That's what the schematic design includes. But we will start having those discussions moving forward on the 17th of December. So...
And maybe with that, remind the And maybe with that, remind the public, because they passed, because our voters passed using sales tax, whatever our number is, Stearns County residents will be paying 45%, approximately 45%, which means none of us want to go all the way up to three, the allocated or the possible permission from the legislature up to 325 million. But if we did, Stearns County residents, the most they would pay would be about 146 million. So thank you to the residents that is going to help all of us do this very important project that is also, I just want to acknowledge that it's really expensive. But this way, we're going to be able to share the burden of the cost with those who are also impacted by the center as well. And with that, we are adjourned.